Fifty-five degrees today.
They didn't fail it. I'm not taking off my winter jacket until, you know, it gets up to seventy.
I hear you. Hopefully. It's always the, it always, uh. When it, when the temperature drops, when it climbs like this and then it drops again. It feels like it messes everything up, so hopefully it doesn't.
Oh, that's good for the maple trees.
Yeah, yes.
They're muted.
Oh.
Not good for our, oh, bones, though. Evening, Rob.
Joe, I hope everything's well with you?
Yeah, somebody took my boat away. Hopefully they'll bring it back.
Anybody you know?
Yeah, Ryan Marine.
Okay, that, that's a safe bet then. They, they, they will bring it back after you pay them.
No, they bring it back before I pay.
Oh, you do? Okay. Ah, they show you the bill before they give you the boat, and then they give you the boat back?
No, they give me the boat, then they give me the bill.
Okay, all right.
Then I have to go down and find out what they didn't do.
They do, they do very good work. I will, uh, I will, I will stand in their favor. They, uh, they've always helped us out as far as the Harbor Master Boat, very quickly.
Yep. We had Josh there for a while.
Here. Trying to get as much food in my belly before the meeting starts as possible.
You hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I was trying to say hi to Robbie, now I'll say hi to Josh.
Gee.
He's eating.
All right.
Hello, Gene.
Mr. Tibbo.
Yes, the dinner will have to wait.
Selectman Harbor Master.
For now.
I don't know what that means.
Well, life, life has lots of twists and turns, Gene, you know that better than anybody.
With tons of heavy rains supposed to storm. Nobody.
I haven't heard anything about it.
Last I heard sometime in the evening.
Great, well, it's six thirty. You guys all ready to get going?
Ready.
Right, give it a shot. Do this, it's, um, it is now six thirty on Wednesday, March the fifth, twenty twenty-five, and the hot board of selectmen meeting is now in session. Um, first on the agenda is, um, opening comments. We have some announcements here. Winter parking ban is in effect until March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, from twelve AM to six AM, no vehicles on the street during this time, regardless of the snow. Parking ban contacted the hot police department to be needed, winter strip parking sticker. Moving towards spring, resident parking stickers are for twenty twenty-five are now available. Stickers can be purchased online at the hot dot org. Stickers purchased March first, excuse me, March first to June thirtieth are fifteen dollars each. Stickers purchased July first to December thirty-first are twenty dollars each. Um, so just to be clarified, there was some confusion last year. Don't need to buy two stickers, you only need to buy one sticker, it's just the price goes up July first. And, um, there are some good reasons for that, um, we won't get into now. Um, all bills must be paid to the town and the census must be completed before purchasing your parking ticket. Contact the parking clerk with any questions. Now, town election nomination papers, they're available at town clerk's office, the last day to pull papers is March fifth, which is today. Papers are due back to the town clerk by March seventh, which is Friday. For a full list of open seats, visit the hot election page at hot dot org. The annual town election is on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, polls open from seven AM to eight PM in the hot town hall in the main. And new dog licenses are due back to the town clerk by April first, twenty twenty-five, twenty-dollar late fee will be, will be added for any licenses received after April fifteenth. Uh, contact the town clerk with any questions. Charles Kelly Scholarship applications are now available. The applications are due back by April twenty, excuse, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. This is a one thousand dollar scholarship and is open to the hot resident who has been accepted to a two or four-year accredited college. Page at hot dot org for the application instructions. Um, that's all the pre-prepared announcements we, um. Are there any announcements from you, Selectman Tibo or Canty or?
I have none.
Nothing from here, uh, Josh.
Nothing here.
So, not happening. Um, okay, so moving on to new business, we have a vote to approve an event request. For a five K race. Motion there?
Mister Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the ninth annual Good Hope Running and Walking Five K on Saturday, June seventh, twenty twenty-five, starting at nine AM at Lowlands Park.
Seconded.
See, Leighton O'Connor is on the line, um, Leighton, do you wanna chime in on this? Um.
Um, thank you very much for entertaining this vote, um. I've been the race on and off five K for nine years. With the proceeds, uh, the Nottingham Church in Linfield, where I'm a pastor, and I've actually visited some of these wells over in, uh, Tanzania, Kenya a couple times, and they provide clean water and keep people alive where they don't have water, don't have clean water. So I'd really appreciate, you know, if you favor this. It's very organized, very organized, very detail-oriented, and it's a good group of people. If you have any questions, just let me know.
So, my audio was breaking up, was everyone, was everyone else okay, or is it my internet that's unstable?
Yeah, it was, it was broken up, uh, a little bit.
I think we got most of that. Um, that's great, um, part I didn't hear was, um, uh, it benefits what costs, sorry?
So, uh, the proceeds go towards digging wells in Africa, Kenya and Tanzania, um, and, um. I've been involved in this race for on and off for nine years, being the race director. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, the proceeds will go towards digging a well in Africa. Um, it's a good group of people, probably anywhere from hundred and fifty to two hundred runners. Um, pretty organized, um, if you have any questions about the race, just, uh, let me know.
Is it Leighton or Layton?
Layton.
Like, you've had an interesting life, Layton.
Thank you. I live over on, uh, Twenty Castle Road, we moved here in, in July.
Wonderful, we're glad to have you.
Thanks for having me, Gene.
Welcome to the town.
Thank you, we love it here.
Good, happy to hear that.
And I was looking at other locations and Bob Fields, a friend of mine, suggested Nahat. And I thought, what a great idea.
Perfect.
All right, so, um. So, a few details here, so the race will start and end at the Lowlands Park and the route will be the same as Lynn YMCA five K. Um, the race route and registration information can be found on the community calendar at the hot dot org. Uh, so is there a date? They should click on, on the community calendar. See, let's see.
We also have a website where you can register as well. And that will go up as soon as this gets approved, hopefully.
Layton, what was the date that you settled on?
June seventh.
All right. Was this, was this the, um, original date was, I think, proposed for in May, right?
Correct, but you have a town meeting on that day, town meeting?
Yeah, so Layton originally was proposing for it to be the same day as town meeting and we asked, uh, Layton to consider another date. He was happy to do that, so it's, uh, gonna be early June.
Yep, okay, it's not on the community calendar yet, but, um. Um, as we get closer to the date, maybe, um, we can send a server binder and we'll, we'll mention it again and. It'll be available. Um, all right, well, thank you, Layton, um, any further discussion on the, um, five K race? You're hearing and seeing none, roll call vote?
Me and Canty, aye.
Rob Tibbo, aye.
Josh, I'm a aye. Uh, next we have some meeting minutes to. Take that on.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from January twen- January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, February fifth, twenty twenty-five, and February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Seconded.
Okay, that was seconded by, so, Canty, um, any discussion on the meetings? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote?
Me and Canty, aye.
Rob Tibbo, aye.
Josh, I'm a aye. Next on the agenda is a discussion on Colby Way and the possibility of, um, turning that into a one-way road, um. I see Dan Fury's on the line with us, uh.
I can kick it off if you, if you like.
I think that'd be great.
So, so Dan came to the town, uh, quite some time ago, uh, with support from neighbors. Uh, you know, raising concerns about the traffic on Colby Way. A lot of issues with, um, larger vehicles, uh, going from Bass Point Road, taking a left or a right up Colby Way, it's a pretty steep incline there, uh, which, and, and the road really isn't wide enough for two cars to pass. Uh, so it does cause some issues. Um, we've also ran into some issues where a lot of the, um, delivery trucks for local businesses, their GPS programs that they use, uh, if they're trying to, uh, get to, say, Ocean View, um, sometimes take them through, uh, Colby Way or Try Mountain Road. Um, and we've, Dan has taken the lead on reaching out to those programs or companies to ask them to make a correction because there is no way to get from Bass Point to Willow Road. Um, but it would be part of, uh, you know, getting that change would be an official letter from the town saying that no trucks are allowed on Colby Way or, you know, officially declaring a different, you know, if it becomes a one-way of some sort. Um, and that, and speaking with Dan, uh, that really becomes a vote of the selectmen. Um. You know, in a community like ours where we don't have a highway department or a, um. Dan, what was the other position you were saying, uh, like a, uh?
A traffic commissioner or a traffic commissioner. Study like Swanscott has a traffic advisory committee, but we don't have one, so.
So we, so it defaults to the selectmen, um. I've met with Dan a, a few times, uh, understand what the issue is going on there, spoke with, uh, police, fire, and DPW. Um, we, we did a, a traffic count back in August, um, through the police department, and Dan got a petition from the neighbors making a request. Um, been on some email, uh, communication with the neighbors there. And tonight is an opportunity to them to present their request to you, the board. Um, so with that, if, if it's okay with you, unless, unless the, the board has any questions, I think it'd be good to allow for Dan to, uh, Fury to take it from there.
Good. You wanna unmute yourself, Dan, Gene?
Maybe, maybe we let Dan give us a, uh, an overview and then we could ask questions. Josh?
Yeah, that sounds good, Gene.
You're unmuted now, Dan.
Can you hear us?
We can.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
We can hear you, Dan.
Loud and clear.
We can hear you, uh, you may not be able to hear us, but we can hear you.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, we've been having trouble hearing you.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
Okay.
So we have the TV on. All right.
All right, so, go ahead.
Can I read you something? Okay. Oh, okay. All right, let me begin with a quote from my neighbor who lives across the street on Bass Point Road. When I told him of our efforts to put a do not enter sign at the bottom of Colby Way, he said, that's a no-brainer, I never go that way, I feel like I'm using someone's driveway. The intersection at Ba- of Bass Point Road and the bottom of Colby Way is a ticking time bomb. It's a car accident waiting to happen or worse, a pedestrian getting hit by a car turning up the hill. We've already had a two-car accident this summer on Colby Way because of the two-way traffic. Anyone walking down to the bottom of Colby Way needs to be very wary of cars making that turn. Even more so if you have a dog or you're pushing a baby carriage or both. We've lived at the corner of Colby Way and Bass Point Road for thirty-two years. Over the last few years, we have seen a very steady increase of congestion on Colby Way, even though it cannot handle two-way traffic. Adding to our concern is the excessive speed used by some drivers going up the hill. Colby Way is unique in this town because it's steep, narrow, and it's used as a shortcut to other points on Bass Point, aided by Google Maps, Apple, and Waze. Increased traffic is a problem everywhere, but it gets magnified on Colby Way. Eliminating the traffic from one direction would be a giant safety improvement and would alleviate congestion thereby keeping the bulk of the traffic on the roads and off the ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dan, um. So, I don't, maybe you can't hear us, Dan, but, um, I think your proposal is to make it one-way, no going up the hill.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, and then, um, in the email exchange today, um, um, I think Louise Cox said, you know, at first she wanted to do that, but then she was having second thoughts and maybe there was a way to have it be one-way except for, um, local residents. That was, that was sort of the last I read.
Yeah, one way, one way going down.
Yeah, one way going down, but, um, um, allowing someone who lives on Colby Way to go up possibly? That was sort of a last-minute iteration I saw in the email exchange. That, that which you read, Tony?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I, that's what I read too, and I know there's also a resident on Colby Way, um, who their driveway is parallel parked a, a, along Colby Way.
Yes.
In order to keep their car in the driveway and off of the road, they have to pull tight up against the house. And which means their driver's side has to be on the Colby Way side versus the house, which puts them, uh, parked in the direction of heading up Colby Way. In order to, in order to park like that, they actually have to come up Colby Way. So there are some unique circumstances with residents on the street. Um, so I think, you know, for us, I think we need to do a little bit more research on how. I think Dan makes, Dan and the, and the neighbors make a, a valid point as to the narrowness and the safety concerns related to the traffic there, and as I mentioned before, you know, an official decision by the select board, uh, writing, you know, writing a letter from you to Google Maps and Waze and, you know, showing them that there's a change here, will have them, uh, incorporate that into their system to hopefully lessen the amount of, uh, folks who are not familiar with the area being directed to go down Colby Way, uh, because it's the quickest, um, path uh, from Castle Road to Bass Point Road. Uh, so there's certainly some legitimacy to the request, um, there's some safety concerns that could be alleviated with a change. Um, but then there's this other consideration of residents on the street, you know, needing to have the ability to, uh, go opposite of a one-way decision, so, um, I think we need to do a little bit more research with Dan. Um, and, uh, Chief Furlong on how we would, you know, A, is, is it legal, uh, to do some sort of change that only applies to non-residents, and then secondly, you know, how would we enforce something like that? Yeah, obviously that would be a challenge. Uh, so, there's a couple more things we need to iron out, but, uh, wanted to give the neighbors and Dan, if anyone else is on the call from the neighborhood, like, you know, give them the opportunity to uh, speak to the request directly to the board.
Again, do, do you have the support of all the neighbors? Dan?
Speak there.
My guess is he can't hear you.
Yeah. Um, Tom Hamilton, you wanna unmute yourself?
Yeah, uh, I just.
Yes, I, Gene, I'm, I'm on a time delay, I'm on a delay, so I don't know where I am in this conversation with you.
Um.
You know?
I, I.
Go ahead.
I, I can hear you, but I, it's, it's, I'm a, I'm a minute behind.
Okay, what, what I'm asking is if you have the support of all the neighbors?
No, we heard you earlier, and then it stopped.
All right, um, let's, let's go to Tom Hamilton for.
Tom, if you can start with your name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, Tom Hamilton, Seventeen Kenny Avenue, um.
I have polled twenty-one, twenty-two of the Colby Way. Um.
Residents?
This is a fiasco.
That's, that's okay, Dan, uh, there's, we understand there's a delay on your side, uh, that's okay.
It could be this side of town. Um.
Why don't you go ahead?
Tom Hamilton, uh, Kenny Avenue, which actually is on Colby and the edge of, starting Harris. And we kind of knew Kenny Avenue was one-way from Harris down to Colby because of the steepness, and it's almost impossible to turn up on Colby, so we like to drive down the hill, which is on a, a butts Col- uh, Colby, and then down to Gardner. So, uh, I just wondered, is it gonna stop at Harris, or what, what configuration are you considering?
It wa- it was, the request was just the very top of Colby Way, uh, down to Bass Point Road.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I think, you know, there are certainly spots, if not the entire length of Colby Way, that two cars going in opposite directions couldn't pass each other physically. I think, so, I mean, my personal opinion is whatever, uh, whatever the the residents of Colby Way wanna do, it'd be fine with me, you know, if there's a way to make it one-way, you can go up the hill and, unless you live there.
Dan Scrip, uh, there, I have seen examples in other communities that, uh, have do not enters signs, uh, except for residents. Sometimes it's do not enters for a given time or a given, uh, day of the week. Um, so, it seems like there's some legal precedent to do something like that, is that correct?
Um, I've not looked into the issue, but I've seen signs as well, so I'd be surprised to find that you couldn't, but to your point earlier, enforcement's gonna be an issue, um, but I don't see an issue in terms of a legal aspect um, of limiting it to the residence or period of time throughout the day.
Well, I think if we, uh, I think that would be the al-, you know, the ultimate solution, I think that's the hurdle that we're dealing with, is that there are some residents there that actually have to travel up, uh, Colby Way. Um, so if we could figure out a way to do it, uh, that it's, uh, unless it's to, you know, travel to a resident on, that's on the proper, on the roadway. Um, and then we could send a letter to, you know, Google Maps and Waze and these other programs that, um, use, that, that help navigate people a little, it, it may help defer some of the traffic that is going down Colby Way instead of when you get to the end of Castle Road, taking a right or left on Gardner.
Tony, i- is there, not to change the subject, but to e- extend it a little bit, is there a protocol for police and fire up there? A, a, a way that they can service that area?
Yeah, I mean, no matter what traffic pattern we, we decide or signage we put up there, police and fire have the authority to surpass that to respond to an emergency.
I'm talking about negotiating it, is, is, is it with a lot of difficulty? Some difficulty or not?
Yeah, there's so- some of the, some of the, uh, equipment with the fire department, uh, can't take a, uh, can't go up Colby Way. The, there's a steepness from Bass Point Road going up Colby Way where, uh, like the ladder truck, I assume, Rob, you may know better than me, but I assume the ladder truck would, would scrape if it tried to go up Colby Way from Bass Point Road.
Yeah, there's, there, there's that landing, uh, down on Bass Point Road where you basically couldn't take a truck like that either way. Uh, so anything, any access is gonna be from the top. Uh, Gene, in answer to your question, the fire department regularly uses Colby Way as an example for their driver training. Uh, so, uh, firefighters have an idea of, of what they're encountering and, and, and how to access that, that area.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
So, uh, maybe we just, um, you know, do a little more research and see if we can, um, accommodate the wishes of everybody who lives on Colby Way, there's not that many people. I mean, and it's not a street that, you know, people are, or should be using necessarily um, to get from one place to another, like, you know, live there, there's probably not much point in driving down that or up that hill, um, regardless of what Google Maps or Waze tells you. Very quick.
Believe it or not, uh, when we did the traffic count, um, in late twenty twenty-four from late July to mid-August, it counted two hundred and seventy-seven cars, which I thought was quite a few, uh, for that road.
In what period of time?
That was, uh, July twenty-seventh to August eighteenth.
So that's.
Traffic, only a couple weeks.
Three weeks.
Only a couple weeks and a decent amount of traffic there, so.
Yeah.
I do think, I think as, as the, uh, statement that Dan read from the neighbor there, I think it's the GPS systems that is adding the level of traffic on the street. Uh, so, uh, hopefully we can alleviate that with a, with a change and a vote and communication.
I, I can easily see GPS referencing that as a U-turn, if, you know, if you have to get back down Castle Road from that area. uh, it's going to be turning you around. Uh, it's also the straightest line, as you pointed out earlier, is from uh, uh, from Castle over to uh Bass Point. I, I, just for conversational purposes, I like the sign that Dan gave us an example of uh posting it as one-way, uh excusing residents. Uh, and I, I'd like us, I'd like to see us explore that.
I, I'd suppose the same thing. That's a good point.
Yep, me too.
You have a comment?
The oth- the other thing is, if I could, I heard him correctly, Dan said that he has of the twenty-two neighbors, he has twenty-one supporting him. So there'd be no argument with, with neighbors in that area.
Uh, tho- so those are neighbors along Kobe Way. I think, you know, it would be best for us to also um seek some input from folks on Bass Point Road or Tri-Mountain Road, because obviously if we're diverting traffic, it'll move it to there. So it'd be good to have a larger uh range of input. Uh, but it does seem like he's got a, a lot of support there on the road itself. And it seems like there's some legitimate safety concerns as well. Sheila had her hand up.
Yeah, I wanted to say, um, something new that has occurred. Uh, there's been a new sign right at the entrance to Kobe Way at the corner of Castle and Gardner Road that says not a through way. So I, I think that may be helping alleviate the curiosity factor of going through the little skinny road that Kobe Way is. Um, and um it is, there is a longstanding etiquette where if you're driving up from that intersection, if there's someone coming down to Castle, the person entering has to back up very carefully to allow the cars coming on into the Castle Road area. But it, it's a good neighborhood um system that we've had for over sixty years.
Until you were discovered.
Until Kobe Way, yes.
All right, so it sounds like we're all on the same, same page. Um, hopefully, um, you know, a sign like that will, will do the trick that allows residents to go up the hill, but residents only. So, um, as you suggest, Tony, we can study it a little bit more, but it sounds like we're in favor of um helping out the neighborhood.
Yes.
So, um, is there anything further we should discuss now or just agree to um continue to explore it and with the understanding that we're all in favor of um uh doing whatever the residents want?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, technical difficulties all the way around. I was not able to hear. I was on one-minute time delay. Can I just simply state? I missed half of what you guys were saying. Um, you just, we're going to look into it. You, you guys are going to do some more work. I, I just wanted to add to go back to ask, answer Gene's question when he said, have I talked to everyone? I've spoken to everyone on Kobe Way, twenty-two residents on Kobe Way. Twenty-one of them were, were, were for doing something. Um, and there is, there is a, um, and I just want to simply say that some residents need to have the flexibility of driving up Kobe Way. Tony, I know you addressed this. Due to the difficulty accessing their driveways, especially in bad weather. Residents that live at the top of Kobe Way, they may also need to exit uphill because of the bad weather. A lot of them have elected to drive down. It, it'd be down Kobe Way during, you know, a, a one-inch, anything. It's, it's difficult. And there's one, and there's one resident, which you guys already talked about, who's, who's handicapped and needs access in both directions. I understand it creates a, a different, you guys are hesitant about giving us exemptions. But we're a different breed and Kobe Way is the only place in town that's like, that's like this. I, I challenge you to find another spot in town that has what we have. Two-way direction, um, you know, narrowness, you know, it's, it's steepness. It, it's got everything. And it bottoms out at the bottom. If you look at the bottom of Kobe Way, you could see the gouges from the trucks uh on the bottom. That's all I want to say. I just want to get that out and we'll try to work towards something. Dan?
Yep.
You need, uh, I, I think the nexus of our conversation while you were uh having uh audio problems was focused on the uh photograph that you showed us of the sign one-way uh with a resident exception. Uh, and, and, you know, just to, just to give us some focus on options that we might have. And I, you know, we're, I think we're all pointing in that direction, but that's, you know, obviously our uh, the, the, the board is, is very much in favor of trying to assist you. Okay, and, and I appreciate that, Rob. And uh also that sign with some of all, if you've been in some of Cambridge, Arlington, they, they, they're everywhere.
I've seen Cambridge and Marblehead, it's.
Constantly. And uh.
Small, small streets.
I know. So anyways, okay, that's great. Uh, as long as we can try to alleviate this because I, before something happens, because it's very treacherous at the bottom of Kobe Way when you're trying to take that left. I'm telling you. Just try doing it one day and you'll see what I'm talking about. Thank you.
All right, Dan. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
We'll um, we'll see what we can do.
Good, appreciate it.
Right, let's see. Um, okay, ongoing business, ADU discussion. Um, we received, um, we met last week briefly um to uh vote on the um proposed ADU zoning article that the planning board had um put together. Um, ultimately, there were a couple minor edits that um they wanted to make, so we agreed, let's reconvene this week. And um so here we are. And um so we have a vote to accept the planning board's ADU zoning article and send the planning board's ADU zoning article to the planning board for the public hearing process. Um, so we have a motion on that.
Oh, before we make a motion, Josh, I, I might, I just ask a question here. Uh, should the motion, be, given what you mentioned as far as the uh sending it back for amendments and such as that, should the motion include uh the date just to identify the version that we're approving here?
That's a good idea. That's a good idea. As approved on uh March fourth, week twenty.
So, uh, then Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that I move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the planning board's ADU zoning article as voted by the planning board on March fourth, twenty twenty-five, and send the planning board's ADU zoning article to the planning board for the public hearing process.
Seconded.
Okay, motions are made and seconded. Discussion.
For discussion purposes, I think if I would like it to add um or modify the motion to add the Table of Use Regulations four point one-three.
It's included. It's included. It's included with what you sent.
Okay.
Going to share my screen here. Uh, so here's the uh, the language and at the very bottom uh is. It, the table.
Okay.
Yep. So.
Just to be sure. Thank you.
So for anybody um on the call or listening at home, um, I'll just point out that uh in this case, the planning board sends us this article that they want to put on the um town warrant. Um, and we can only vote to either return it to the planning board or not. We can't change it. We can't edit it. Um, it sounds like a very strange process, but it makes, um, so in other words, a planning board sends us an article, we send it back to them, and then they review it. Um, so that sounds kind of strange. And um so Tony reminded me why we go through such a strange process, which would be if, for example, a zoning article came to us by citizen's petition, we would look at it and vote to send it to the planning board, since they're responsible for zoning. Um, and then they would review it and make their recommendation. So it, it only seems like a strange process when it's coming from the zoning board to go back to the zoning board. But um, that's the process. Um, it, but it does seem kind of funny uh to send us something that we can't edit and have us vote on it and send it back to the, the original source. But that's, that's the rationale for um how this works.
Can I add a little too as well, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Okay, so just for uh, for those watching background, uh, the legislature passed a piece of legislation that requires communities to allow uh protected ADUs by right when they're conforming to your uh dimensional requirements set forth by your local zoning for single-family zoning. So we have to be uh as if it, our regulations, it also, that legislation allows the town to put forward regulations. Those regulations have to be consistent with the right, with the zoning requirements set for single-family zoning. So um we looked at a lot. We heard from residents, I think the planning board heard from residents about, you know, wanting to be more restrictive. Um, but we can't go, we can't be more restrictive than that of what single-family zoning dictates. Um, so we, the state then put out regulations, final regulations. Um, they came out February second or third. And the planning board has been uh, was drafting regulations uh or local bylaw to that point, and then absorbed a lot of the information from the final regs published by the state into this version. Um, there's a lot of legal review so far to make sure that it's consistent with the state law and state regs. Uh, after tonight, we'll also send this article to the Attorney General's Office for a preliminary review. And if we get any comments of issues with what we are putting forward to town meeting, uh, we will likely need to make an amendment on the floor at town meeting to be consistent with those recommendations. Hopefully that doesn't occur. Uh, unfortunately, the way that the timing and the schedule worked out, there was no way for us to get that response before starting this process with the planning board uh of their public hearing. Um, a very, of, a, a key element, I think, one of the most important things that was discussed uh with the planning board and through the select board, uh with the selectmen, I mean, is that the state law requires that you allow the protected ADU by right if it's conforming, and you can go through special permitting if it's non-conforming. Um, it also lays out how you would handle a second ADU or a third or a fourth. But it doesn't require that you allow more than one. And that was a key element here uh as far as how uh ADUs could impact our community. And so this article that's proposed would limit uh it to just one ADU that meets the definition of a protected ADU. In most cases, uh, in the hunt because of the properties that we have, um, it's not really, in most cases, it's going to be impossible to add a new structure that's conforming and meets the definition by right. So if you, if it's adding a new structure, in most cases in the hunt, it's going to trigger a special permit process. But it also allows for residents to convert existing space within the structures that they have on their lot to the protected ADU definition. So it, based on a review with the assessor and with the planning board, we don't expect uh that this article is going to open the door to a number of new uh structures being built in the town by right. Um, so that was a big, that was an important piece here. I, we, we heard a lot of, you know, there's definitely a lot of concerns from residents about how this could change the characteristic of the community. Uh, I think the important piece to educate residents on is that not voting in fav-, you know, if we don't pass this article, the state law is in effect and overrules our zoning. This article actually regulates to the most that we can as a community uh particular to our community. So in fact, passing this article uh will, wa- is uh in a way um protecting our community from the larger opportunity that the state law provides. If that, if, does that help explain that a little bit?
I think so.
Sheila, do you want to add anything?
No, um, just exactly like you said, this, the state law is out there. And usually when the state law passes, we then have an opportunity to um make it a little more restrictive. In this case, the state has come out with a law and has allowed us only to make some very small, reasonable um changes that would, what I think would protect the community. So we've tried to do our best without it being rejected from the state. We do want it to pass, so we do have some control over um the accessory dwelling units.
So I, you know, I don't think, I, I'm scrolling through here. I don't think we need to read it line by line. It's been discussed a lot at the planning board uh in their meetings. It's going to be available at the town clerk's office, online and in your FinCom books. Um, the, the public meeting or public hearing uh will be published two weeks in advance and one week in advance uh that the planning board will hold and encourage residents to attend and participate in that hearing if they have questions or concerns. Um, and then the planning board from there will formulate a recommendation, provide it to the finance committee. It'll be included in the FinCom book that gets mailed out to all residents. And I'm sure we'll be talking a lot about it leading up to town meeting.
Okay, what was the public hearing date again?
It, it's going to be on March the twenty-fifth.
March twenty-fifth?
Yes, either at six thirty or seven P M.
All right, thanks, Sheila.
Yeah, you're welcome.
That's, that's probably still the ideal time for um people to ask their questions and, you know, in advance at town meetings, so um, so that people's questions are answered um ahead of town meeting. I think, Tony, you said and Sheila, I think Will said, one of the key things here is that we are not allowed to make this um more restrictive than what we have on single-family houses. So for example, a big one is the height, right? So the height restriction on single-family house in the hunt is thirty feet. That means we cannot restrict ADUs to less than thirty feet.
Correct. Right, so practically speaking, uh, what this allows, the protected ADU definition is nine hundred square feet or less. So practically speaking, you're not going to see a nine hundred square foot, thirty-foot-tall ADU. And, and again, most of the, most of the properties in town, uh, you know, wouldn't support the conforming buildable space to be able to do it by right as a new structure. So most, most applications are going to, are likely going to trigger a special permit process.
Yeah, but I mean, even, yeah. I just, you know, I think it's important for people to understand that, you know, we can't say, oh, the ADU has to have a fifty-foot set back of our, if our single-family zoning says fifteen.
Yep.
It has to be. It can't be any more restrictive for the single family. And I think that's probably all it's going to be at the core of a lot of the questions you get at the hearing on March twenty-fifth, Sheila, so.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah. But um appreciate all the work that went into this and um looks good to me, honestly.
This is the third time charm.
Room wasn't built in a day.
Yeah.
Okay, um, any more discussion on this? Um, on the motion?
None.
All right then, uh, roll call vote.
Me and Kent, the eye.
Rob to the eye.
Josh, Shannon, I. Um, okay, um, next on agenda is the MBTA. Uh, thank you, Sheila, and um, and to the planning board for that. Um, looking forward to voting on that. Um look forward to voting on that at town meeting. Um, okay, uh next on the agenda is MBTA three A review regulatory comments submitted to E O H L C. Um executive office housing.
Livable communities.
Okay, thank you.
Uh so I apologize if this is confusing. We've tried very hard to prevent some confusion with the multiple uh housing policies that are put before us from the state this year. We've, you know, we're we'll be taking up the ADU bylaw at the upcoming town meeting. The MBTA three A zoning, we're going to take up at a special town meeting at the end of the year. We don't have to comply until the end of twenty twenty five. So we've really tried to separate the conversation so that it doesn't cause confusion because they are two totally different things. However, uh the MBTA three A uh regulations were uh required to uh be re-promulgated. And the comment period uh was ended on February twenty first. Uh the town, the town submitted comments to those regulations and we wanted to just uh they're available online on the nahat.org website. We wanted to share them uh tonight at this meeting. Um. So our comments uh to the Secretary of E O H L C, um we we really wanted to talk about the specific concerns to our community. Uh we really, we wanted to highlight the fact that Nahat is a one square mile peninsula. Uh we have one bus route in town. We're the smallest municipality in the Commonwealth and essentially we don't have uh much land to be developed for housing. Um and while MBTA communities, we understand that the that the law is just requiring zoning and not necessarily requiring development. Um we have a lot of pre-existing, non-conforming, multifamily dwellings in town that we could rezone. However, because it also doesn't require any affordability element and because there's other challenges, even if it did, uh there is there is the potential negative impact of displacement to residents who live in non-conforming multifamily housing today that may be at below market rate, even though it's not deed restricted for affordable housing. And when we don't have other land in town to develop to give those residents a place to go, should where the location that they're at now be redeveloped and rent go up, it could lead to displacement of residents. So we really wanted to, in other communities, they may have land where they can create affordable housing uh that residents can shift to. We don't really have a lot of that opportunity here, which is unique for for our community. So we really wanted to uh express that that issue to uh E O H L C. Uh we also wanted to talk about um the fact that we are open town meeting form of government. So when it comes to compliance, uh ultimately, it's the voters of the town who are going to determine whether we comply with this with this requirement. And if we if we don't comply, there are um negative effects to the community, like being ineligible for certain grant funding. Uh and when we when we look at what happened in Milton and the Attorney General's lawsuit against the town of Milton after they didn't comply, uh there's an effort by the state to force uh multifamily zoning. And so those those two uh potential negative impacts uh are concerning uh for a number of reasons. And and we really wanted to explain to E O H L C that the leadership of the town could come up with the most perfect solution here that doesn't jeopardize the characteristics of our community or our residents. We could do the most perfect process of education um and informing the residents of the need to vote in favor, but ultimately the leadership of the town doesn't control that final decision. It's the voters of town that decide. And we've seen in other communities who have done that great work uh ultimately fail to pass the zoning and and then they incur those negative impacts. So that's a that's a key element that we wanted to push. And then another uh major point that we wanted to make is one of those grants that are uh if you don't comply, you would be ineligible for is the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant program. Our town spent years and a lot of uh and resources, volunteer hours, professional uh assistance, technical assistance to become an MVP community. There was a long process in order to get that get through that. We put together a large study, a report. We had public meetings. Um and luckily, we were able to get into the program and we've then utilized uh the program to fund studies for particular um coastal properties like Forty Steps. And if we don't comply and are then ineligible for the MVP program, it would be extremely uh it would be an extreme negative impact to our town. And for a one mile peninsula, uh almost, you know, except for the two lane road on the Causeway, we're a hundred percent, ninety nine point nine percent surrounded by water. Um you know, to to be ineligible for climate change preparedness funds due to a housing policy compliance requirement is a real concern for us. And we don't think that that's the intent of the state as they're trying to deal with, rightfully so, uh the housing crisis across the state and and um the rising cost of housing. So we really wanted to make sure that they understood, you know, it just i- in a way, when I spoke with the secretary of uh the undersecretary at E O E A and let them know that we submitted these comments, the way I put it was like, it's it's almost as if you got a ten year sentence in prison for speeding. You know, it's like it's the the threat far outweighs the required compliance. And so it's a for us, you know, for for a town that's so susceptible to sea level rise um and with such limited ability to add more housing, um even understanding the need and have the desire to to comply, that that just the threat seems so much heavier uh for a community like ours. So we really wanted to get that point across. And then lastly, we we're aware that uh there's some of our neighboring communities like Winter and Hall uh communities like ours that are small coastal dense uh communities were submitting comments of uh a new category of community uh that the state could consider to include in their regulations uh that would provide uh some element of exemption if you meet certain thresholds like I spoke about uh about how dense and um coastal number like population, things of that nature. So we wanted to just uh also plug their effort in that um and ask the state to consider um, you know, looking more specifically at some of the communities like ours and the challenges that we face and and and, you know, consider that while they're looking at the regs that they're now re-promulgating. Uh so that's the letter. Um and that's the explanation. It's online. And happy to answer any questions.
Okay, can you scroll down to the bottom of this first page?
Am I still sharing it?
You are, yeah. Uh so if you scroll up to the bottom of the first page.
Uh right here.
Yeah, yeah. So um to me, this um this paragraph is really important. You know, Nahat has an open town meeting form of government. The most um democratic gum form of government there is. And um so we're going to give the the townspeople something to vote on, something that's we think is palatable. But ultimately, as Tony said, it's up to the voters. So um the townspeople will vote and, you know, we felt it was really important, the last sentence here. It is incumbent of the Commonwealth to respect the democratic process of town government and not penalize a community for the outcome. In other words, we really wanted to make that point because um they're they're making us vote on this, but they're penalizing towns that don't vote the way they want. And that uh we'll see if this letter um makes any changes, but at least um we wanted to make that point that that, well, I'll speak for myself. I feel like that's not appropriate. You're 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 making someone vote on a zoning article and punishing them if the people don't vote the way you want them to. And um I think that's very under democratic, quite frankly. Um that's all I had on the subject.
Hey Tony, that's just to 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 say that was a great outline that you put together. A great letter and uh thanks for all the work that you put into that.
Thank you. Very well done. Thank you. Uh so the the planning board will take the lead on um the process of reviewing what our requirements are and coming up with a solution um of compliance that they can put forward to the town uh for a special town meeting at the end of the year. Uh it's going to be a lot, a lot of, there's a lot to that. Um obviously, it's it's difficult uh especially over the summertime to get a lot of community involvement in in these types of things. Uh but it's going to be very important uh that we do that so that people are informed properly uh on what is being put in front of them for a vote. Um I think we'll see what happens with the regs and see if there's any changes to be made. Um. And, you know, there's, I think, I think there's, there's potentially uh also a solution here for us. Uh as I said, you know, as we've looked at it, Sheila's uh already looked at it too, is that we have uh almost over four hundred multifamily units in town uh and our requirement is to zone for eighty four of them. So uh the law does allow us to rezone existing, pre-existing multifamily properties. It gives us some restrictions on uh, you know, dimensional requirements, setbacks, height, uh block coverage, things of that nature, number of stories, number of units. Um so there may be a solution that we can put forward that it doesn't drastically change the characteristic of the town. Um and we'll see, we'll see through the process what, you know, what opportunities are presented to us there. Uh but we we really wanted to make sure we got these comments to E O H L C. Um I I I think that, you know, they, the state housing is, you know, they talk of the governor, um the legislature, they talk about housing every single day. It's one of their top priorities across the state and uh our our feeling along with some of our neighboring communities is that, especially when it comes to zoning, uh every community is different and there's a lot of different uh characteristics that need to be considered. And we and we feel that the uh that the uh housing and livable communities should have the ability to take a deeper dive and look at those unique characteristics and uh find a way to achieve their goals without, you know, drastically uh or unintentionally negatively impacting a community.
Tony, I I know I've asked this before, but does this contribute at all to our affordable housing number?
It doesn't require that you do. Um it doesn't, you are allowed to. You can, you can find a way to overlap the two together, but it doesn't require it.
Yeah.
And that's and that's the, that is the scare, that's, you know, kind of the scary part about what's happening in Milton. Um we, Dan, I think, reviewed the uh decision by the, was it the S J C, Dan?
Yeah, they found that um the the law itself is was was constitutional because there were some there were some pushback to to Josh's point that it might be overreaching and allowing, you know, permitting an un-unfunded mandate and requiring too much of cities and towns when the home rule powers that we have allow us under uh under that rule, a lot of power to maintain our own use of property laws and rules and whatnot. Well, the S J C said, nope, the 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 A the legislature has the ability to pass those law that that law and the A G has the ability to to sue to enforce. And the only reason it went south for the A G's office is because the the regulations that were passed weren't done properly. So all the S J C did really was put the case on, well, theoretically on hold. And then those new regs will be vetted through the the notice, notice the comment period and there are, that's already done. Um and they'll be passed again. And if Milton doesn't comply, they'll be sued again. And you can bet any other town or city, uh MBTA city or town, well, that doesn't comply will also be sued by the A G's office.
But some of the relief that the Attorney General was seeking from through that suit against Milton was that if they don't comply, that they can that the state can uh rezone Milton.
Right. They'll appu- they'll appu- they'll they'll appoint a receiver or something along those lines. I don't exactly know what you mean, but it's a receiver and then they'll do it.
Or or they can rule that the town is unable to enforce their local zoning that is not compliant. And so when you're dealing with a a policy that has no affordability element, Gene, uh and you know, you, if you're in that situation and you can't, a- and the state basically can rezone or and really kind of take control from the town there uh or limit your ability to enforce your local zoning against a potential project that doesn't have any affordability element. Um it really changes the risk. You know, when we talk about our lack of compliance with forty B, uh it's been around for a long time and we haven't had any uh unfriendly forty B developments in town. A lot of the conversation there has to do with the economics of of a development and the requirement to have affordable units and how that may or may not make financial sense for potential developer. With MBTA zoning without an affordability, it changes that whole formula. You know, you're talking about um a development that has no affordability requirement. So now all of a sudden, it may be uh a lucrative proposal for a developer. So it's definitely a concern. It's something that we're keeping a close eye on and something that we'll have to make sure we educate Nahat residents of those those risks.
I I think this is the first time I've heard mention of uh the state possibly appointing a receiver to come in and and make the changes. Uh till now, it it was at least in my mind focused on the loss of state funding uh for various things. Uh so this is, this this does put, for me anyway, uh an additional spin on it that we really need to get something done, something done here.
And that was a shocking part of the decision, Rob. I- in my mind, the legislature said, you, if you don't do this, this is a penalty. And it was very specific, as Tony mentioned, there are three things that you don't get. Where the A G said, well, we're going to take that and go further. I was shocked when the S J C said, yeah, you can do that, even though it's not in the statute. So, yeah, that was a very shocking part, I think, that impacted all the MBTA communities. We call it overreaching.
Well, there's certainly, there's certainly no advantage to not complying. That's that, I mean, that just closed the door for me.
Now with Tony, what what you've done so far, I mean, you've you've kicked this, as they say, you've kicked this. Now, with Tony, what what you've done so far, I mean, you've you've kicked this, as they say, you've kicked this can down the road. Since its inception and doesn't that count? For being in compliance, not with the law, but with the directions directive of the law?
At at this point, we we have. Only had many, like, very little uh requirements put on us. And really, it's just been communication with the state that we're heading in the direction of developing an article. Uh, to put forward that will comply, so we've checked those boxes, but. Our requirement is to pass an article by the end of twenty twenty-five. So that's why, that's, you know, I I imagine some of the comments that we submitted to the state, to be fair, I could, I can. I could see a, you know, a response from the state of, well, let's see if you pass it. You know, some of these issues are not an issue unless you don't pass something. Uh, so I could see that kind of a response. Um, but hopefully, uh with the, I know, like I said, neighboring communities have submitted comments. As well, you know, really pushing the point that we. Communities like ours have unique challenges and this one-size-off uh approach. You know, not only does it cause larger issues for communities like ours. But communities like ours are not really the intended target of this legislation. We aren't, you know, a community like ours is not going to. Make a massive change in the housing crisis that the state. Uh, has, and we don't have a lot of land to develop new housing, it could create some displacement. Um, so there's. Our ask through this regulatory process is to, for them to kind of take a closer look at the unique challenges that communities like ours face. And hopefully, make some changes to their regs that provide us even more relief. Um, on in this, you know, that being said. Without this legislation, uh you know, we wouldn't be looking at multifamily zoning. And there is some, there are some things in our zoning that um deserve a closer look and maybe need some changes. But uh, you know, what that ultimately looks like and and what's best for the town in Ahant. Is undetermined at this point, we really need to go through. The process, the planning with the planning board and with some technical assistance and with community input to find out what that sweet spot is.
Thank you.
So we'll see, we'll see what uh, we'll see what the final regs look like. When they, when they, when they uh, when they come out, when they get published.
Thanks for that, Tony. Um, next, um, we also submitted. A letter to Swamp Scott um on the topic of the King Beach Outfall. Um, did you want to share that as well?
Yes, uh, so last or a couple of weeks ago now, uh, the Swamp Scott Select Board. Uh, had a meeting to vote on whether to um. Fund a pilot program for UV light treatment to the Kings Beach um downfall. And we submitted a letter of support uh to to them. Uh, asking that they vote in favor of the pilot program uh with the city of Lynn. Uh, we've heard from residents here that some of the alternative. Options that Swamp Scott and Lynn are considering. Um, include the UV light treatment uh pilot program. Um, and or an extended outfall into Nahat Bay. I will say also, simultaneously, they're doing a lot of work on uh reducing. Wastewater getting into the stormwater system on both sides, Lynn and Swamp Scott, so they're, either way, they're still working on funding and. Projects to help reduce the amount of wastewater that actually gets into the stormwater system and falls at Kings Beach. Uh, so that's, they're certainly prioritizing that, but it's a, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work, it's hard to do. There's, uh, it's quite challenging, so they. They also want to look at what can they do on the, on the beach side. And we felt it was important to support the UV pilot program because of the, a lot of the concerns that we have. And that we've heard from our, from our residents about the alternative. Which features a uh extended outfall into Nahat Bay.
And that fall untreated.
So this as well is on the hot dot org. Um, we submitted it and Swamp Scott uh voted in favor. Uh, so they are gonna be working with Lynn to pursue this pilot program. And I think what their, I think what their plan is to basically see what the results are. And figure out what a permanent UV pi- uh UV program uh would look like. Uh, for the Kings Beach Outfall, so. Um, we're happy that they voted in support of it.
Can only hope that 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 works, the test program works, because the last thing we want is to get. In any way, shape, or manner, looking at, I I I. Think it's forty-five hundred foot outfall, which will take it right out into directly into Nahat Bay. Not good.
Yeah. Exactly, Gene, that's my, um, you know, we sent them this encouragement letter, so thanks for composing that, Tony, I think, um. You know, I think it's um, it's a Lynn Swamp Scott problem, but um, you know. It isn't without its impact on the house, so. Happy to hear that they have voted to. Take step in our direction, friend.
Quite an expense too, I mean, this is just a uh a test. Uh, and uh the amount, the amount of money that this is going to cost is is uh uh really an eye-opener for me, so. Uh, I congratulate them on moving forward with the project.
Guess I didn't hear the number, Rob, what what was it?
Uh, you know what, it's not on the top of my head, but it it was in the hundreds of thousands, I believe.
It was, I think, the, I believe it was um. Three hundred thousand from Swamp Scott, and I want to say it was five hundred thousand from Lynn. So eight hundred thousand total, and I believe that was funded through um. A, an earmark or uh some sort of funding source through the state. Either through a bond bill of some sort, but I know the legislature, uh the legis, you know, Senator Crichton. Uh, worked hard along with the representatives uh for Swamp Scott and Lynn on getting them that funding.
Tony, can we get get on the meeting schedule? Would would that be appropriate? As this, as this goes along.
I I I, you know, um, we've made the ask. Uh, again, it's, it's really not a Nahat, I mean, it it it's really a Swamp Scott Lynn. Uh, problem, obviously, some of the, one of the alternative solutions concerns us. We've made that point known uh to both leadership in Lynn and Swamp Scott. Uh, and to our uh state delegation. I I don't, I don't see us having a seat at the table because it's really not our problem. Um, but we've made the ask.
All right.
I I I think, I think that uh. Our primary concern right now would be to just keep an eye on how that test goes. What do they get the results? And and that's gonna take a while by itself. Uh, and hopefully it comes back favorably, uh but uh that's, that's where my focus is at this point.
Okay.
Next on the agenda, preserving East Point. Um, so we did get some important news, um. Just this past Friday on the eminent domain case, so. Uh, just to recap for people, back in April of twenty twenty-four. Uh, Judge Karp ruled um in favor of Northeastern's summary judgment saying that um. Um, the eminent domain uh claim by Nahat was um. Invalid, uh, called so-called bad faith taking. And um allowed Northeastern to make a damages claim as well, uh which Northeastern did do um. In round numbers, they claimed damages of about twenty-five million. Um, approximately twenty-four million of that was due to um construction delays. Um, and since that time, now, the damages um have been the subject of um. I guess you'd call it an appeal, or appeal of the damages. And um on Friday, Judge Karp um dismissed the damages, the construction delay damages, which is. You know, roughly twenty-four of the twenty-five million dollars, so uh that was a a big relief um. Uh, for for the town, so uh really happy to hear that news, um. Glad um, uh, the judge understood the points that our attorneys made. Um, that which was, you know, in layman's terms, that um construction delays. Aren't a thing in eminent domain cases, and the judge agreed. Um, so um that was a very good outcome for the town. Um, the process is ongoing, um it's not over. There, um, just thirty days to uh respond to that um. Um, that ruling by the judge, which both Nahat and Eastern can do, um so. Upward and onward, but um we're relieved to have the uh, the twenty-four million dollar burden um. Uh, denied by the judge, so that's good news, uh we have um. Uh, in the uh gift account, so this is all donated money, so just as a reminder. All the money, one hundred percent of the money spent so far is donated money, that means zero dollar tax money. Um, and as of today, uh there remains five hundred and nineteen. Thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety cents in that account. Um, so um, as I said, the process continues, but um. Uh, with um far less of a burden than um, you know, we had previously. Gene, Rob, Tony, and any, anything to add?
I think you've summarized it well, Josh, I'm good.
Yeah, well, we do have an executive session um after the open session. Um, ends, concludes this evening, uh meeting with our attorneys and um. Uh, talking over this um, this um, the outcome and uh. Then what the next step should be.
I I think, I think you summarized it good, uh I think that you did a good job there, I think too, you know. An an easy way, I I get a lot of questions about where, where are we in that eminent domain case, what's the process? You know, just quick overview, uh, the town, as you mentioned, filed for the eminent domain of the conservation restriction. The first part of that process is for the judge to determine whether uh that filing is lawful or not. Through summary judgment, Judge Karp deemed that it was not. Then from there, you go into the second part of the process where uh related to damages. The first part of that is to determine which damages, what category of damages are eligible or not. On Friday, Judge Karp made his decision on those. And now the next part, I believe, is to determine what the value is of the eligible damages. And then you get to the finish line of the eminent domain case, so we're in. I guess we're a little bit more than halfway through the process at this point.
So, is there's anything to add to that, anything, any other comments or additions? Um, all right, Coast Guard Housing update, we've had uh some bids recently. On to listing, bunch of bids received, I think one lot did not get bids, um do you want to give us a update on that, Tony?
Yes, um, we've, so we're in the second offering, which includes lots. Uh, the even lots, two, four, six, eight, ten, as well as lot five. Uh, which was a holdover from the first offering that didn't receive bids. We started uh with ten, worked our way down through the even numbers, and then tomorrow is uh. Lot number five. Lot number ten, we received three bids, uh the minimum. Number on lot ten was five fifty, the awarded bid was six ten. Um, I will, we have been notified that the uh awarded bidder on lot number ten. Uh, has, is not gonna move forward with a purchase and sale agreement, and so we are gonna be relisting lot number ten. Lot number eight, the minimum bid was five thirty-five, and the awarded bid was six oh five. Uh, lot number six, we also got three bids for lot number eight, the high bid was six oh five. Um, the lot number six, we received three bids as well, the minimum there was four twenty-five. And the awarded bid was four fifty-two, five hundred. Lot number four, we received no bids, so we'll relist that again um through an addendum along with lot number ten. Uh, lot number two, we received one bid and um. Let me see here. Uh, the bid was five seventy-seven, two hundred, and the minimum was five twenty. So we're going through the process now of negotiating the purchase and sale agreement on lot number two. And then, as I said, tomorrow is lot number five at three thirty. Uh, the lot number ten and lot number four is, are going to be relisted for the end of the month. It'll be Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, and Thursday, March twenty-seventh.
That sounds good, so that's one point six-ish, a little over one point six, I guess, um. More, there's another bid tomorrow, so that's good, and then a couple more lots to relist.
Yes.
With the um, improving weather. I heard the interest rates went down recently, so um, hopefully we have um. Good luck with the real listings, but that's great, I mean, continuing great progress, so. Thank you, Tony, Lisa, everyone else involved.
Be nice to start receiving some tax revenue off of those properties.
Uh, okay, so that's all I have for Coast Guard Housing. Uh, next on the agenda is the Town Administrator Report. Um, where I just wanted to report that we have, uh as you know, we've sent our budget and warrant to the Finance Committee. Allison is uh in a finance committee tonight, a finance committee meeting tonight, uh they meet again tomorrow night. Um, the CPC is making progress uh through their uh process as well. Uh, met with them on Monday night, uh so at our next meeting, uh we'll vote uh to. Add some uh articles to the warrant and get those over to the Finance Committee. Um, and that, that's all I'll I'll uh report tonight.
That's a quickie, um, all right, next up is uh citizens' comment, so uh anybody that's. On the Zoom call can um unmute themselves, um state your name and address and. Make your comment, ask your question. Everything we would like. See, see Ken Corangelo has his hand up.
Hello. I don't know where I am. There we go.
There we go.
Go ahead, Ken.
Hi, oh yeah, um. Uh I guess relative. I'm sorry, Ken Corangelo, eighty-one Willow Road. Uh with regard, yep, um uh question with regard to the eminent domain case. There was another parallel case running that had to do with uh uh dedication or a claim of dedication of that land, uh which was also denied by the judge in a separate case. Uh I don't believe the board has addressed that publicly. Um did you want to say anything to sort of close out that portion of?
Yeah, sure. Um yeah, so there was um another case, um it's commonly referred referred to as the dem- eminent, uh excuse me, the dedication case. And and so the essentially the basis of that is that um the claim that um Nahat joined onto was that Northeastern had dedicated this land to as conservation land, um you know, when they bought it back in the mid-sixties, nineteen-sixties. Um and that it hadn't it had been treated that way by both the public and by Northeastern um over the um fifty, sixty years since that time. Um and so therefore it was um conservation land because it had been dedicated as such by by Northeastern um. And the judge ruled that although that may be true, that um Northeastern made those statements um back in the day and that um the townspeople or the public treated the land that way. It was never formally or legally dedicated as conservation land, so therefore it was not. Uh we did, um that case was appealed and that appeal also lost um. So part of the rationale can for for that case, um it it certainly um I would say didn't seem like as certain um a positive outcome as the eminent domain um seemed to be, and I believe will be ultimately, quite frankly, um was if the if the dedication case was won, then there would be no need for uh the eminent domain case. In other words, if the ki- if the court declared this is conservation land, then it's conservation land and you don't have to pay the pro tanto for the conservation restriction, the eminent domain. So there was a pretty good legal slash financial reason to pursue parallel paths along with the eminent domain uh case. So um but yes, um that um that we did lose that case, um but um that doesn't mean this is over. Um but thanks for reminding uh about that.
Yep. Um also, just with regard to the to the eminent domain case, the damages, the actual number for the damages, as you mentioned, is sort of the next step. Um I know the 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 board and the Tom Clark has declined uh my information requests about the decision-making behind the legal strategy, um which I've decided not to appeal. Um but based on what you've just said, uh clearly, if the case is not over, the only thing that implies is that uh you're intending to appeal the eminent domain decision as well. So uh
Well, that's your conclusion. Um a- as we, as you know, your your answer is gonna be, um it's in uh it's in the legal system, so we're not going to reveal our strategy.
Well, you you can just did, but that that aside, um who's paying for this? As it goes on indefinitely, uh and
Maybe you didn't hear what I said a few minutes ago. Uh all of this is uh privately donated money. None of this is taxpayer money.
Well, so far, you mentioned that it's down to five hundred nineteen thousand or so, um which is down from seven fifty-nine back in September. So clearly, that money is the money is being spent as each, you know, each hearing or meeting or document goes on. Um and of course, the damages are on top of that and not coming out of that three million dollars. So again, who's who's going to pay for this as it if it if it does in fact continue indefinitely through multiple additional appeals?
Not gonna speculate on that, but thank you for the question. So, all right, I saw Michelle's hand go up next. Michelle Capano, would you like to unmute?
Thank you. Michelle Capano, twenty-nine Ocean Street. Just on the matter related to Kings Beach that you were talking about. I don't know if you're aware, but um I just saw recently that City Lynn and the town of Swambscar are having a joint town hall on Tuesday, March eighteenth, at Lynn City Hall at five-thirty. It's open to the public and it residents are following this and they're really interested and they want to attend and voice their um their feedback. Probably um you know, good for leadership as well to attend as well and just listen to hear what um Swambscar and Lynn are doing.
Michelle, what was the time for that again?
It's five-thirty P M at Lynn City Hall.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Sorry, I also I also missed the date, Michelle.
Uh, March eighteenth.
We'll uh make sure it's on the calendar.
Thank you.
Thanks. It's good information.
Few hands up here. I'm not sure what the sequence was, so I'm gonna go on my left to right. So iPhone tech.
Okay, hello, uh can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh it's Francis Baril, twenty-eighth Sunset Road in Nahat. Uh I just want to make a point of what the town um what was the town was offered, and I I'd like for people to hear this. From the university, uh way back when when uh we negotiated with them. There was uh six, six million in cash over twenty years with a a renegotiation at year seventeen. Uh continued scholarships, continued payments to Johnson School, which is around fifty thousand, I think, a year. Guarantee of no dorms, guarantee of no more land purchase. And ah and here's the big part, and this is what kind of really um kind of blows me away. I mean, they offered, after they put their building up, to put ninety-five percent of their land, the rest of their land, in a conservation easement, which the town is actually wants to pay for, which makes no sense to me. And they'll put that in a conservation easement so that they can't even build. Uh infrastructure money for the water and sewer. Uh I mean, this this right now, as of Friday, this could be a real turning point for the town. I mean, I I think maybe um I I'm just wondering if it's if it's possible that you guys sit down with them and talk to them and see if they can, you can go back to the drawing board with what we negotiated. And to reiterate on Ken's uh conversation about Article ninety-seven, my question there was, would be that's been dismissed by the judge, Judge Carp. The appeal was ju- uh dismissed by the Appeals Court and the Supreme Judicial Court dismissed it Friday, last Friday. So that's over. You can't, you can't go back there. When are you going to release or when will you accept the executive session minutes? So that for for that, for the that particular part of the the case, so that the townspeople can see what went on, you know, with executive session minutes. Now, you're supposed to accept those at some point so that people can see them. It's a public document. Um and I I just think that it would be wise to let people know what's going on uh with that whole thing. And I just want to remind people that eminent domain is gone. It's not there anymore, uh unless you appeal it. So um that's all I wanted to say. And um I just wanted to let people know what what, you know, what we we what we're missing. If, you know, uh what we missed. And, you know, maybe you can get it back. I don't know, but it's worth a try. Thank you.
Yeah.
Frank, yeah, gee. I know you've been involved in a lot of this in the past, and and I guess I would ask the question because it's it's a question I often have. What happened at this point? Has Northeastern contributed to this town in any real sense?
Okay, Gene, well, you you asked that question. They give the school fifty thousand bucks a year. They've offered, they give scholarships, so they offer two half scholarships a year for every year that somebody goes there. So that's that, that means they offer one scholarship. If you add it up, one scholarship per person uh for two people, for every single year that they go to the school. Now, granted, you know something? That doesn't cost them a lot of money. But we did negotiate something with them, Gene, and it worked. It 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 worked. We we got it, you know. I mean, what what's worse? To just say no and then have have eminent domain, if if you appeal it and you lose, that we have to come up with the damages, which might not, aren't going to be the twenty-five million, or and give up what they negotiated with us. Okay, and I mean, which to me, it makes no sense to do that. It it makes more sense to work with them. Absolutely makes more sense to work with them. They've been good neighbors. Uh it's not, you know, a wild place. It's by any means. It's it's nice. They keep it nice. They've offered to take those two trailers away once they put their building up. And, you know, and 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 it'll be have a nice day, you know? I mean, I I don't think I don't think it's as bad as everybody thinks it's gonna be. And and they've offered, the other thing is, they offered to take care of large park forests. They offered to take care of all that property up there. Make it look nice, whatever we want. And I can tell you, when I was on the board, anytime I asked them for something, they never ever refused me, never ever refused us, I should say.
I I wouldn't be totally concerned with with the the maintenance of the park. That that isn't a problem. I'm looking at the real money value of what they've contributed over the years, and it's almost zero.
Well, how how do you say that, Gene? They give the school fifty thousand bucks a year. What's what is, let me ask you that. What is what is the the land value at?
Think for one minute, Frank. Think about what they're chasing now, what they want now, what the real value of that is to them. Fifty thousand dollars a year for the past years.
So you'd rather take nothing. You'd rather take nothing, lose the battle.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying what have they given? And it's close to nothing.
Well, how do you how do you do that? When they have, they give the school, they, you know, they're very quiet about that. They do give the school. They have been for quite a few years now. Fifty thousand bucks a year for art and music. They've never, never never quarrelled about that. They always, they always give it to us. That's not, never been a problem. So so I so you have those numbers, you have all those numbers in front of you, what they, do you have the numbers in front of you, what they give us?
No, I I I I'm gonna get chastised for even bringing this up, I'm sure. But at the same time, it's something that's always troubled me throughout the process.
Okay, so so let's, for for argument's sake, let's just say they gave us nothing. We negotiated a good deal with them. If if we lose, which we already have, we've lost it, okay? People have to understand that, then they can buy more land in Nahat, which they said they wouldn't do. They can do a lot of things. They can make that building the way they want to. If if they get they'll get their permits. They they're well within their rights. So what is, they they worked with us. They shrunk the building down. They put it in the ground. I mean, what what to me, it makes more sense to work with them.
Mr. Cherry, Mr. Cherry, to Gene's to Gene's point, we're going too far down a road during with still active litigation. And I truly recommend you you'd move on.
And that's fine. I don't I don't disagree. I don't disagree. I didn't call to get into an argument at all. I'm just telling you what we missed.
Yeah.
Let's take it, let's take it under advisement.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, um Peter Galati.
Wow, wow, mine's gonna be really boring then. Um I, oh, Peter Galati, twenty Simmons Road. And my question is, or my comment is with the A D L uh rules and regulations. I saw in your document, we can regulate some of the use, and it said you can't use the the A D L for short-term rental, which is one of the things I'm concerned about. But do we have the ability to prevent short-term rental on the other property, the main property? Because I could see someone building something, living in their house, and then when they have a rental, move out of the house into the A D L, rent out this big house, make a lot of money, and um so I just didn't want to see um A D L to further um advance Airbnb short-term rental type things.
It's an interesting question, Peter. Um did we have any?
Yeah, that's a great question. The interplay between these ADUs and the short-term rentals is still being sort of drawn out. It is true that we can prohibit the A D U's from being used as short-term rentals. But your question is an interesting one. You can bet some creative landlords will try to do that. My first thought is an A D, the definition of A D U is premised on it not being the principal bu- building. So if they're gonna move out of the principal building and move into the A D U, I think you can argue that that no longer is the principal building. Um so I think that might create a rub to to work with. Uh but that's the best answer I can give at the moment.
Yeah, my comment was more like, you live in your principal building, but then you have a two-week rental coming up, so you move out of your principal building, you go into your A D U, you rent out your big house for a lot of money. And then when the guests leave, you move back into your own house.
Yeah, I I I I still wonder, though, if you're gonna move out of the principal dwelling, move into your A D U, are you then sort of relinquishing the title of that being a principal dwelling? I don't know. It it it's it's the stuff is still being sort of molded.
That's kind of going on, like if you went on vacation for two weeks and rented out your house while you're gone, you know? So anyway, just something to think about. We don't need to debate it through today, but I just wanted to throw that out there that um creative people might use this as a door to open up more A D Us in town uh in a already tight-packed neighborhood.
Good question.
Thank you.
And they'll be, now now with the local licensing requirement for short-term rentals, uh there'll be a there'll be an inter- there should be an interaction between the homeowner and the town. And um if we if we know that uh they have a protected A D U on the property, it'll it'll kind of flag that um issue for us. So hopefully we'll get some some guidance from the state on how to handle those.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
All right, Kevin McCarthy.
Hi, folks. Kevin McCarthy, twelve Linda Lane, and um a couple of questions regarding, again, the eminent domain matter. I think first of all, you we should have mentioned, and I didn't think I heard it clearly, that the order by the judge, in fact, said that Northeastern is entitled to recover its reasonable expert and attorney's fees in this case. So that's the the issue that's still waiting to be determined, the amount of that money. The other thing I heard two of you say, one said we're halfway through this case, and the other one said, I think we're gonna win ultimately. That seems to tip your hand that this is case is going on and we're going to appeal it. So my question is, if we had three hundred, if we had three million dollars from the private donors and A, as you said, we're halfway through and we've already spent all but five hundred thousand of that, that's two million, five hundred spent, and we're only halfway through, it would appear that the five hundred thousand left certainly couldn't finance the remainder of the case. Secondly, my question becomes, let's assume you were right, Josh, in that we do ultimately prevail. Now, it's not unreasonable to say that we would spend that five hundred thousand dollars getting to that point through through appeal. But then if we prevail, then we have to buy the property from Northeastern for whatever price comes up. Where does this money come from if we've already eaten through the three million?
Yeah, thanks for your comments. Um as you know, we can't really answer those directly, but um yeah. Anything else, Kevin?
I'm not asking, I I mean, do we have a plan as to where this money is coming from?
Not gonna answer that, Kevin.
I think even you don't believe that there's enough money there for one, for us to go through years more of litigation and two, to then have the money to purchase the property if we survive, if we prevail.
Duly noted.
This is gonna cost the taxpayers. If we win, it's certainly gonna cost the taxpayers.
Okay. Duly noted. Uh uh next question?
Yeah. Brendan?
Uh Brendan, Veronica Homestead, two Summer Street. Um I'm following up about the eminent domain. Uh I guess there was, you mentioned there was this other court case where um there was some, I guess, gray area about the property being Uh, um, there was some, I guess, gray area about the property being conservation land, and now the court has decided. That there is no legal protection to it being conservation land. Now that the court has made that decision, does that leave Northeastern open to basically resell the property to anyone else? And it can be developed into commercial property?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we're not in a position to talk about what Northeastern can or can't do.
Well, no, uh, I guess I'm asking is because, because it was, i- it it was the, it was an assumption that the land was in concert, was dedicated as conservation. And the court has now said it's not dedicated as conservation, does that now? In a sense, open the land up to any development, or is there still some conservation protection?
Well, it is.
It's local zoning protection.
Yeah, it is zone natural resource area, so what that means is it is not commercially developable. Except um due to the, or possibly due to the so-called Dover Amendment. Um, whereby um educational and religious institutions uh. Can essentially not comply with local zoning, so it would. As a natural resource area, it would only have value to an educational or religious institution. Because of that zoning designation.
Okay, so it still has a level of conservation protection and that has not been stripped of that that parcel of land.
That's correct, yeah, that's a local zoning um designation for that area.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Shannon Bianchi.
Hey, good evening, everyone, um, I just wanted to first off.
Would you mind um um stating your name and address?
Yes, uh, Shannon Bianchi, fourteen Harborview Road, uh-huh. Um, I I'm so sorry that I missed the the meeting earlier. Um, my family's going through a bit of um strategy with, over the next few days and. Um, with some planning of of us all getting together down south, and and I do apologize to everyone that I wasn't here. On the call earlier, um, and I wanted to also say that I trust. Everyone's judgment and that I hope that everything went well, um, and I wanted to offer something completely obscure. Um, and um, because I've heard a lot of contentious stuff tonight. And so over the past month, I've I've spent some time in Hawaii and um. I was swimming in Hawaii and o- o- off of Maui. And I wanted to share with you um something that the the guy at the snorkel shop. He he shared this, this flyer with me. When I was swimming in the ocean, right, so I could identify these fish, and I thought, what a great idea. If we could maybe task the Johnson School or some some folks in town to like. Come up with an idea of like what fish we have around here. Um, and so I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention as an idea, you know, that I'm an idea guy, so. Uh, I wanted to also thank everyone for um, you know, their hard work uh tonight, and I look forward to working with you in the future. That's it, thanks.
Thanks, um, thanks for that, Jim, that was interesting, interesting thought, um, as always, um, it reminds me of um. The uh Rock, um. Rocks in the heart geology book that um that my wife helped um put together. Uh, funded by Swim a few years back, it'd be kind of fun to do something similar for um fish, eighty birds. East Point's a great birding area, if it stays that way, um, I like the idea. I I bet Swim would be interested in sponsoring something like that, so thanks for the addition. Uh, anyone else or citizens comment? Do not see any hands up. Um, okay, going once. Twice, okay, so um I'm gonna make a motion here. Uh, we're gonna make a motion um to adjourn to executive session, we will not be returning to open session. So uh, thank you all for joining, um. And we'll see you next time, uh, I move that the board select and vote to adjourn to executive session pursuant to. General law chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. Northeastern University Marine Science Center, four thirty, Hart Road, Nahat. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body. And I, the chair, do declare that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And we will not return to open session, we have a second.
That's a second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, will call, vote.
Gene, can't you? Rob, Tim, OI.
Okay, good night, everybody who's not part of executive session.